Hello. Terrific. So we're about ready?
Yeah, so we don't have Lee, so you'll designate a secretary?
I'll handle it until unless somebody else wants to practice being secretary. I don't see anybody jumping up to do it.
But I'm not even sure that I have all the information. This is the first time we've done, at least that I've done digital, everything digitally. Anyway, it's a question I'll have later about how we print out everything and all.
Yeah, that directive just came down beginning of August.
My solution is if it's available to you, works, which is two laptops. One's got all the documents and the other is Zoom, because I don't want to go back and forth with Zoom. It's just a kind of a pain in the neck.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to read. I've got it in front of me.
Okay, that's good.
As I recall, we read the entire staff memo, do we not?
We do. I gotta lead in with the all the imperatives. So let me start that now and get it done. As we always have a link that people can go to to join meetings, look at notices. And that link is norwalkct.org forward slash nineteen thirteen forward slash meeting dash notices. And if you go there, you can get to pretty much everything we need for tonight. Members of the public can call in and listen to a meeting. They will not be able to speak or see any of the meeting participants. Each meeting will use a unique meeting slash webinar ID. Please find the information at the link I just gave. Members of the public who wish live comments will need to register in advance and use the Zoom meeting platform. All participants will be muted upon entering the meeting. To speak, click the raise your hand indicator. And you will be called on by the host of the meeting during the public comment section. Please find the information using the link that I gave previously. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting but are not participating can view a live stream on the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. This stream is delayed by approximately twenty seconds. Please find the information using the link I provided. The meeting recording and minutes will be posted on the City of Norwalk website within seven days after the meeting. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment are encouraged to submit those via email in advance of the meeting. For these comments to be read into record, they should be submitted at least four hours in advance. The start time and you submit to, and if you're a little late, which would be by now, t maldonado@norwalkct.org. Okay, and let me just do a quick cover. We have Tom Farkas, Danielle Sancheck. By the way, I'd want to talk to you two at the end of the meeting. And then we'll kind of close up after that. Marilyn Altman, Keith Lyon, and myself. Lee has a medical reason for not joining us tonight. I hope he gets well soon. And with that in mind, that's the call, the order, the roll call. And now to the public hearings. The first one, twenty-two oh eight eighteen oh one, John and Kay Garrett. Go ahead, Keith.
John and Kay Garrett, variance for number of stories, three proposed, two and a half stories maximum allowed. Variance for rear setback, eight point five feet. Existing and proposed fifteen feet required and side setback seventeen point two inches, sorry. Existing and proposed. Thirty-five feet from center line required. Section one-one-eight dash three-four-zero C and one-one-eight dash nine-zero-zero B. And variance to allow parking within the front setback. Section one-one-eight dash one-two-two-zero J for an existing single-family dwelling in B residence zone. Property located seventeen East Beach Drive, District Six, Block thirty-six, Lot thirty-five. Request: The applicant seeks variance of story maximum to accommodate a house raised to make the structure flood compliant. Setback variances are sought in the event that portions of the existing non-conforming footprint of the structure must be rebuilt due to structural issues. Additionally, the applicant also requests variance to maintain existing parking configuration. Background: This home is a single-family residence originally constructed in nineteen oh five. It is not currently compliant with FEMA flood hazard zone requirements. Analysis and findings: The purpose of the FEMA flood hazard zone regulations are to ensure that all structures in a flood zone are adequately constructed to withstand a coastal flooding event. The proposed height of this structure is compliant with the maximums allowed. In the past, the board has looked favorably on these requests for relief from both height and number of stories requirements for structures that will be built flood compliant. The lot configuration and parking conditions in the area could be considered hardship to allow the parking configuration to remain as is.
Do we have somebody representing the applicant?
Yes. Hi, I'm Amy Zabatakas from Rucci Law Group, representing John and Kay Garrett, the property owners at seventeen East Beach Drive. And I'm also joined tonight by Mr. Garrett and by Michael Benjamin, who's the project architect. Tammy, if I can do the share screen, I'll, I can go through the presentation.
You should be able to do it now.
Yep, I got it. All right. You should be able to see the survey now. Is that, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So this is the proposed survey. As was mentioned, we have an existing home that is within the front and side yard, the, I'm sorry, the side and rear yard setback. Although the visual front of the house is on Park View, because East Beach Drive is the shorter of the of the, of the two frontages on this corner lot, that's considered the front yard on East Beach. The existing home is a three-story home. And it is legally not conforming to both for stories and for the setbacks. And in addition, the, there is existing parking within the front yard setback. The proposal is to, as was discussed, raise the house in the existing location to bring it in compliance with the flood zone and build it an addition that is within the building envelope. With the raising of the house, the foundation will be replaced with floodproof foundation with flood venting. And the, we do plan to retain all of the exterior walls that are within the building setback area. However, a discussion with staff decided it was prudent to include in our application the additional request to be able to rebuild those walls in case anything comes up during the during the construction process. We don't have to come back to you all, but it's our anticipation that we'll be able to keep all of those exterior walls. The, let's see if, if I can switch over. Can you see the elevations now? So what we've got here is, and this is in your packet, it's the last page of the architectural plans, but you can see the existing and proposed house. And I think importantly, the house really isn't appearance-wise, particularly in the area that's closest to the closest neighbor, going to end up being taller. And the house does, as was mentioned, comply with the building height regulations. We've already got this high peak on the side that's closest to the closest neighbor. Neighbor notices were sent out and no objections were received by my office or by staff. In addition, Mr. Garrett did personally reach out to all of the neighbors and ask if they wanted to speak about the plans. And he received no negative comments from any of the neighbors. In fact, most were positive about the improvements. The other, the other piece of this, of course, is the off-street parking spots that we're requesting to retain. As I know the board knows, I actually watched your last hearing, and I know Belle Island and parking was the, one of the matters at hand during that hearing as well. There's a real shortage of parking in this area, and these are the visitor spots. And in fact, the, that spot in the back is even sometimes used by some of the neighbors, because it's right adjacent to the beach park right there. So we would, those are existing conditions, and my clients would like to be able to, to retain those. So I think this is the minimum adjustment necessary to bring the house in compliance with the flood regulations. So therefore, as was stated, we're requesting a variance of section one-eighteen three-three forty C and one-eighteen nine hundred B to allow the house to be retained and raised within the setbacks, and then one-eighteen twelve-twenty J to allow the retention of the parking areas. And I know that was, seems to have been extremely short and sweet, but I'll open it up if there are any particular questions from many of the members of the board.
I just want to make mention that we typically approved folks that needed to raise their house to meet the FEMA guidelines. And certainly where this house is located, the lower part of the house would need to be raised.
Correct.
The thing that we didn't approve in the past was an increase of mass of house. We required that the footprint stay the same. We recognized that basically we're adding a floor allowing it to be raised, and we kind of cut it off at that. In this case, you are increasing the mass of the house. Why?
Well, we're increasing the mass of the house within the, the buildable area. We're not increasing the mass of the house in the, in the setback area.
Okay, because I think you need to keep in mind that, you know, you are right there next to East Beach.
Right, right.
And if we keep building houses as large as this and as tall as this, then basically it walls off the beach.
Right. Well, well, the house does, that, that's the interesting thing about it. The house does comply with the building height regulations. It's just the fact that the existing house is a three-story, that it's a story variance that we're asking for as opposed to a height variance. So to the extent we're talking about anyone looking over this house, that, that's really not going to, to change because the height is, is still compliant with the zoning regulations.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Higher is it going? I, I know this house. Actually, it was not that long ago renovated. The whole back was renovated. They have a beautiful outside kitchen. And I was there today. I mean, there's a staircase going. I mean, their first floor is above the garage. Am I, am I correct about that? I don't know.
No, they have, the current house, let's see if I can go back to the right page easily enough. In the, oh, here, yes, this is the existing. So the existing the existing, there's livable space in the same level as the garage currently, which is this existing basement plan.
Can I swap you for a second? Is that partly underground? A hill, that's why I'm curious.
Yes, it is. It's, let's see, let's, let's go back to the elevation.
Garage is not underground, but the area next to it is built, built the way my house is built.
Right, right, exactly.
And this is on the Park View side?
Right on, correct. The, which, I'm sorry, the, it's, well.
I mean, the, the garage is on Park View, actually, in the house, the, as in East Beach drawing.
Correct. Sorry, I thought you meant with the view of the park. Sorry.
So we're talking about, because I, I, there's a staircase that goes up, it seems, to the first floor, which is just above the garage. However, you're saying to the right of that, there's living space that's on the garage level?
Correct.
Okay, that's on the Park View. Okay.
Yeah. And yes, and you're correct. The existing house, you know, this, this is, I've gone back to the existing house. There is a staircase up to the, to the first floor. But as you can see, it's actually all, it's really a split. So if you can see, there's, this is livable space down here below the level that you go in this front door.
So are they, so the raising of this is, is the whole house being raised or just that portion in the back?
Well, the whole house is gonna have to be raised and the foundation redone to make it flood, flood compliant and put in the, the flood venting. And so, yes, then the whole, and the whole house in the new house will be, oh, the, the top floor will be one single level above the the garage area, basement area that will have no livable space in it.
Amy, I was gonna say, you might want to mention the few things that are required by the FEMA guidelines. You've got blowout walls. You have no living space in the bottom floor.
In the, in the new basement plan, let's see if I can go back to that easily enough. So, right, so in the new basement, there will be the only there'll be the, the garage area. All of the rest of it will be empty area. There'll just be a staircase up from the inside. Will be the only space that's even slightly finished. And so instead of being the split design as it is now, all of the, oops, wrong way, the first floor now will be one level throughout.
And that will be how much higher up?
The new first floor elevation, so it's the AE, AE fifteen flood elevation. We're actually raising the house two feet above FEMA rather than the one foot that's required just to give a little extra in case the flood zones go up again. So it'll be at, the elevation seventeen will be the first floor elevation after construction. Oh, I'm sorry, what did I just say? Elevation seventeen will be the new first floor elevation.
And I guess in simple terms, how, how much taller above the ground level will the new house be than the existing house?
So if we go back to the survey, you can, there's, the zoning chart shows that the, the, the mid, mid, mid roof height allowed is thirty-one, because you add an additional foot in the, in the flood zone. Existing is twenty-three point two, proposed will be thirty point nine two. The peak of the roof, the, it allow, the peak maximum allowed is thirty-nine. We're at thirty point nine, so thirty-one right now, going up to thirty-seven.
Hey, that's clear. Thanks.
Can I see the elevations again? Old or new?
Sure.
There we go.
Yep.
Okay, so part of the massive look is, is the fact that we've raised it one floor, which is a tall floor. I'm just looking at the general impact of what you're doing.
Right. Yeah, most of the sort of addition in in height is going to be on the side that's on the corner of the lot, so furthest away from any of the neighbors. Closer to East Beach.
So where that little extra driveway comes in, if you were to drive straight forward from there, you're gonna run into this addition, right?
No, a little bit. The, here's the survey again. Yeah, so that's the, this is the addition, which is all, like I said, all within the, the buildable area.
Show me the outline of the current one as opposed to the additional.
The current one, yes, exactly.
Okay. All right. So the difficulty I have with this, because it wouldn't be treating everybody else that came to us in the same way, is that we've insisted that if you had a footprint, that you stay within the footprint. In this case, you're not staying within the footprint. I don't think we have an exception.
Okay, so I guess maybe I'm not following you entirely. When you're saying staying within the footprint, you're saying because of the the three, because again, the only thing we're asking for as far as the, the flood elevation is the, the three stories, that we are staying within the footprint to the extent that we're outside of the setbacks.
Tammy, am I missing something here, or have they expanded beyond the footprint?
I think, so I think what Andy is referencing, Amy is, and which I wasn't aware, that maybe historically, when they looked at these, they didn't include additions in that. And so they were like, okay, we'll give you this allowance to raise to make flood compliant. But then Andy, Amy's point is that her addition is all compliant. That's not, yes, they're adding bulk, but it is compliant bulk. So they don't need a variance for that. If they, if they were, you know, not needing to make it, not wanting to make it flood compliant, they may have been able to do that. But I mean, it's definitely makes sense to try to make the home flood compliant, for sure.
Well.
And, no, I mean, we couldn't build, we couldn't build an addition that wasn't flood compliant. We'd have to build that new addition up.
Right, the new part would have to be.
The new part would have to be flood compliant, but this way we've got a house that's all on one level.
And then they made. I'm sorry.
Definitely, I, I think what I'm, what you're, what you're saying is that, let's just suppose for a minute that this has got nothing to do with FEMA compliance, and this lot is somewhere else. You would be within your rights to build the extension that is shown, the in dotted, well, no, in hardline versus the existing halves in dotted line. Is that?
Correct, correct.
You're saying, yeah, got it.
Right, we're really, what we're, the, the, the variance is to keep that portion of the house that is within the, the setbacks. And then, because the existing house is, is three stories, it's a, it's a story variance, not a height variance. We would be allowed, we would be allowed to build this house, you know, as is, with that, that addition is, is not is not part, really part of the variance, with the exception of the fact that the whole, the house as a whole is a three-story house.
So the addition would be three-story?
That's what it seems to indicate, right? That the addition is also three stories.
Well, once the house is three stories, it's all three stories. It's not, we're not looking at the addition separately than from the rest of the house.
Right, but you would need the variance for story in order to build the addition. Trying to be logical here.
Right. We would need, whether we built the addition or not, we would need the variance. Because we have a three-story house that we're trying to raise up.
Well, my hangup is, is the addition. That's my hangup. I mean, we had turned down other people asking for additions. And they made good cases in some instances, but the, the thing we didn't want to impede or get in the way of is raising homes to meet the FEMA guidelines. We wanted that to be done. As much as some people don't like that, that's too bad. If that's the FEMA guideline, we want to be, the owner should be able to meet the guideline. To expand the house is not something that I think is necessary. It is something desired. So the question is, is whether he has an as of right to do that. Now, I don't think you do. I think you need the variance for three stories to be able to do that addition. Because I don't think you have an as of right to do it. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe Tammy sees it in a different light, but.
No, no, I don't, no, I, I, I don't mean to, maybe I wasn't clear. So if the, say, like, keep positive earlier, say there's no flood issues involved, and they said, oh, well, we've got a we're proposing an addition in the allowable footprint, but then they, if they were, if it was three stories, they would need to have a variance for three stories. We wouldn't give that as a break.
So let me.
I have never had a problem giving the variance to meet the guidelines. I do have a problem expanding the size of the house.
And I guess that's where I'm having a little bit of difficulty, because if we if we raised, let's say we didn't do the addition. If we raised the house to three, to the, if we raised the house and it's an existing three-story house. And then we put an addition on
Right.
within the buildable area that's above the flood elevation. We would be able, would we not be able to do that, to just put an addition on?
You, you may be. Let me just ask Tammy. Let's take that the way that was presented. So we raised the house, it's three stories, it's sitting there. Do they need any other variances to do the addition?
They would if they came back at a later date and said, okay, we've got this house that we raised, made it flood compliant. We went, now we want to do a three-story addition. That wasn't part of your original scope of approval. If they proposed a two-story or a two-and-a-half-story addition onto that. But the, the difficulty here, too, is that in this case, the stories are measured from that frontage only. So if, say they were able to somehow, it doesn't work for this, this case, but say they were somehow able to swing that addition around to the.
And we're not trying to redesign your.
No, no, I know, no, but I'm just, I'm trying to make the, the, trying to explain how the stories are.
I'm just trying to use logic.
Yeah, so if, if you, if, so if they.
Come back later, after the house is built and is three stories, do they have as of right to add a three-story addition?
Well, and I, but that's where I guess I'm getting a little hung up, which is if we there's no way to say that this addition, because it's, it's a house, the stories are looked at as, on the basis of the house. So we can't really say this, that this addition, which we could build as of right, is a two-and-a-half-story addition, which we would be allowed to do. I mean, let me put it, you know, if this was this, let's go back to the, the argument where we're not in the, the, the flood zone. You know, the, the problem is that we, we would, i- if we're putting an addition on the house, we're supposed to make the whole house. If we want it, sorry, let me, I'm sorry, let me start over again. If we left the existing house alone and just tried to put an addition on in the buildable area.
What, what a thing. So it's, I don't have a problem stating it that way. So if you did the addition first, it would be two-and-a-half stories, that's three, and you hadn't yet made it flood compliant. So back to Tammy, do they have an as of right to do the two-and-a-half-story addition?
Yes, two-and-a-half story, yes.
All right. So if it exists now, it doesn't. But as I said, if it exists now as a two-and-a-half-story addition, then when the house becomes flood compliant, then the whole thing goes up to three stories, correct? So it really, it really depends on whether we think it's an appropriate addition or not, and I think that's debatable, but I can see the logic in saying you want the addition as part of it. I can see that logic.
Oh, I, I just wanted to clarify what I think I'm hearing, which is that if they, they have a right, well, I'm answering the question first. Do you have a right to build an addition that's not FEMA compliant? I don't think you do, do you?
No, but I could.
For, for the purpose of the argument, it's as though it was built five years ago or whatever. And if they had the as of right, then they did. Now we have the problem of flooding. So we're gonna have to raise the house up to be FEMA compliant. I'm just trying to figure out whether increasing the mass of the house is appropriate in this instance. But that's all I'm doing, Keith.
Yeah. And I'm just thinking about sequencing, if they have rights to do things and doing them in a, in an order that they have the right to do them is kind of silly, because doing it all together would make a whole lot more sense financially and, you know, construction and time building.
And interference with the neighbors, frankly, but.
That's what I was trying to.
Yeah. I mean, because I.
My question.
I'm sorry for interrupting. I, I, because I think the, the, the issue here is, is that the, the house, if we look at the house and, you know, don't disregard the story question. We have a house that is compliant as to, it's compliant as to height and it's compliant as to coverage. So we would be allowed to put an addition on. It's just, it's because of the corner lot, it's not, the existing house is not compliant in a few areas from setback, and it's, it's a three-story house currently. And so I can't, I can't raise it, I can't put an addition on and make it not, if I'm trying to do the whole thing at one time, it's a three-story house. And so I can't, I can't raise it, I can't put an addition on and make it not, if I'm trying to do the whole thing at one time, it's a three-story house. I mean, I guess the question, yeah.
And where I was going is that if you have the right to do it, the order we were discussing, which is. The extension, um. Then I could make the argument that it's a hardship to force you to do them separately.
Right.
Is that?
I, I, I think so. I think it would be. I, I, I think it would be a hardship both to my clients and frankly, a hardship to the neighborhood. This is not a neighborhood you want to have. Multiple construction projects going on. You'd like it all to be done at one time.
You been out there lately?
Yeah, exactly.
Andy, I'm not sure what you're suggesting here, that they do it separately. No, I don't think that.
No, no, I wasn't suggesting it. I'm just log- using logic. If, if you could, um, as of right, add, uh, put an addition on. Should the ZBA stop you from doing it because you're raising the house? Um.
What would stop them from being able to do an addition? What, what do you, I'm not sure what that angle is.
Well.
Space and if.
When we have, well, it's the height.
No, I understand that.
It's the height. So when we decide to break convention and increase height by another story.
Right.
And that's already increasing the mass of the house. So what we did is we limited to the footprint. And we've been doing that consistently all along and we didn't jump out of that. So that's where we were and that's because we are increasing the height of the house, increasing the mass. So should we at the same time do an addition? And we have in the past said no.
I, I would also point out, I don't know if anybody's looked closely at the plans, but the. Mass of the house increasing to three stories, the third story in the existing house is only over a partial, like, a small. Like, part of the footprint and in the new proposed plan, it's over the whole footprint. Um, so that's kind of adding to that bulk. I think that every, that you're seeing.
Yeah, that's why I was asking to look at the elevations, cause that's the sense I'm getting is that it became more massive. So if you look at the old, which I've been out and looked at the house, it looks lovely. Um, when it goes up, it's going to be taller. More massive. And then if you build it more massive on top of that, then it gets really big. And we're back in the McMansion issue and that isn't the purpose of becoming FEMA compliant. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. It isn't as though you have an as of right to raise your house to three stories. You don't. It's an exception and the exception is based on the FEMA guideline.
Right.
So do we want the whole thing to go up, including the addition to three stories? And I think we don't. Just my personal view. Uh, other people could argue it and I'm open to other thoughts.
I guess the problem that I'm having and it's, it's, I'm not, I'm not trying to challenge what you're saying. It's that I don't know how to say that an addition. Is not three stories because the story guidelines are. Looking at it on a house basis. I mean, for example, the. The space above the addition, if I go back to the third floor, you know, this is unfinished area.
But the playroom there, right?
That's over the existing house. That's the front, that's that box that's the front of the house.
Yeah, like I said, it's, yeah, it is over the existing footprint. It's just also, it wasn't, it's not in the original existing third story.
The.
The, the, the issue for me is when we decide to bust free of the limitations of the code. Because FEMA compliance becomes paramount. Then do we do additions at the same time? And we have chosen not to do that in the past. And do I want to say to everybody we said no to, oops, we made a mistake? No, I don't really want to do that.
Right.
I don't think we made a mistake. I think that that line of thinking is appropriate. Does that mean you come back in later and. Do another addition um and try to get approval to do it? Maybe that's what it means, I don't know. Or you do a redesign and figure out how to live within the footprint.
And I, I guess that's the problem is that basically what I'm hearing from you is if we. If we kept within the footprint, we can go up to three feet and then come back in later with a two-and-a-half story addition.
I think you could, yeah. I don't know.
Cause a two-and-a-half story addition, we wouldn't even have to cut, we wouldn't have to go before you at all because that's compliant. So how are we, because it's in the bill.
Yeah, I know. Uh, you, yeah, but the logic you're missing is that we're already bending the code. To accommodate meeting the FEMA guidelines.
Right.
And in, in, in doing that, the biggest complaint that we've had from people within the communities, whether we hear it tonight or not, doesn't matter to me. Is that we're building more and more massive homes, buildings actually. More and more massive buildings and we're using the excuse of FEMA compliance. Well, to avoid. Actually going down that road, we're keeping app kept people to the footprint. And saying, we're kind of slicing the baby in two.
Right.
We're meeting the requirement that the house not become addition massive. That instead go up one story. So that's, that's where I'm coming from and that's where we've been and therefore I'm not wild about an addition.
Got it. And I guess the, where I'm, where I'm having difficulty is I absolutely understand your logic. If we're talking about a house that is over the maximum height, but we're under. I mean, we're compliant with the height regulations.
And story regulation, but not the story regulation, right?
Because the, yes, because the existing house is a three sto- is considered a three-story house. I mean, if we can, so like, cause that's what I'm saying is if, if I'm not sure how to make an addition. Two and a half.
So do an addition. I mean, that's uh, that's exactly where I'm coming from.
Right.
Now, uh, can you build an accessory structure that's two and a half story tall? God knows, changes in the zoning code are coming that might even allow that, you know. If you get what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, anyway, so that's where I am. I don't know where everybody else is. Everybody makes their mind up. We're like a, a board of administrative judges. We're not planners, we're not regulators, uh, but we're making up our minds as to whether we think uh. The purpose of this is to meet the FEMA compliance. Or whether there's another purpose. And I think with FEMA compliance, I'm fine. Uh, with an addition, I'm not.
So if we were to reduce the, the livable area in the. Um, on the top floor and say that the whole house is two and a half stories. Then we're okay.
I would say you probably are, yeah. Even, even with the house race. Tammy, you wanna weigh in?
Um, I think I need to look at the plans again, but so for. That third story that we're looking at now, if it, it's a full third floor, if it. The only way it can be half is not just the sixty percent finished living area. It's also that the. The vertical exterior walls can't be greater than two feet between the floor below and the plate. So. Yeah, I'd need to look at that detail much more closely to see if that's feasible. Part of the, the driving, I don't want to convolute this or add too much more, but that they're able to regrade. And that's how it's not four stories. That's how it's still three stories. And again, we're, we're only determined stories based on that one facade facing east beach. So.
And then we could pass a variance that provides them the three-story variance. But not give um the footprint change a, a, an approval. Because it doesn't exist and it doesn't need to exist. Um. They could replan it and we could look at it a second time, but uh, I don't know. Danielle, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think there is a way to do an addition that is um more as of right.
All right. Well, I think based on what I'm hearing tonight, I'd, I'd like it if we could not close tonight. And have a chance to sort of look at our plans a little bit more. Um, but. Before we move off of it, I was wondering if I could get the board's thoughts on the, the parking areas.
I'm good with the parking areas myself.
Okay.
Yeah, on Beach Street, you're not, you're just gonna have that solo spot there next to the fire hydrant? That, that's not gonna change. You're not gonna augment that, right?
Um, yeah, correct. The, sorry, let me, I'm going back to the, trying to go back to the survey. Hold on, let me see.
The, the two little extras are the piece that's next to the double drive coming into the garage. Which is toward the corner and then that one little sort of face that comes in next to Foster Place.
Yeah, the, the, the spot that's at the corner of East Beach Drive and Foster Place is, is, as I was saying, that's sort of a visitor spot. Sometimes neighbors actually park there to access the, the park nearby. This is really more of a turnaround area as you're coming out of the garage in front over here.
Yeah, I don't have any reason to change that. It's fine the way it is.
Okay.
That's my opinion. Again, there's.
Yes, no, I know, I just, I'm, we're gonna keep it open. I, if, if that's okay with the board, I'd like to keep it open. I just wanted to get. The, your, your thoughts on, on where we stand with that part.
Do we have a problem with which is the front of the house and which is not the front of the house, Tammy? I mean, their address is East Beach Drive, but the apparent front is on Parkview.
It's strictly, the code specifically says it's the narrower of the two frontages when it's two, when it's a corner lot.
All right. Da-da-da, boom, DA. So um, it's gonna have to stay East Beach.
Correct. Yes, that is by, by the way, your regulations are written. What, what has to be considered at the front?
Anybody else have um any questions or comment?
Now, before Amy proposed what she proposed, I was gonna take the liberty of proposing it.
Well, that, that would be very good. Um, but before we go down that road. Did you have people that were coming tonight to speak uh on behalf of the plan uh without the addition being a big uh discussion point here?
Um, no, I have, I do have uh Michael Benjamin and uh John Garrett, the property owner, available. If you had any questions for them specifically, but um. You know, I don't think we really need to go through the, the floor plans and any great specificity unless there's something that you all have a question about.
Does anybody have that question or can it wait until uh we resume the hearing um a month from now?
Can wait.
All right. Um, so if the board agrees, um, rather than close the hearing, we'll um. Bring it to a, a temporary stop and we'll move them on to next month's agenda. Anybody object?
No objection.
No.
All right, so, so, so done, so ordered.
All right. Thank, thank you for your time and thoughts and we'll uh, we'll reconvene with you next month. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Duper duper. Um. And we go back to Mr. Lyon. I think he's acting secretary.
This is indeed true. Um. So this is an extension request. It is twenty-one dash zero-two-one-eight dash zero-one. Second Norwalk four ninety LLC. Variants for setbacks, building area, open space and buffer strip for two outdoor paddle courts in business two zone. Property located at four ninety Westport Avenue, District Five, Block Eight, Lot Forty-One. Request applicant is requesting an additional six-month extension of time in which to, sorry, something just. Popped up on my iPad. Uh, a six-month extension of time in which to obtain building permits for the above referenced variants. The zoning board of appeals approved the project on March eighteen, twenty twenty-one with an effective date of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Building permits were to be secured by September fourteen, twenty twenty-one. An extension of time was granted in August twenty twenty-one. Which meant building permits were to be obtained by March fourteen, twenty twenty-two. A second extension of time was granted on February seventeen, twenty twenty-two. With permit deadline extended to September fourteen, twenty twenty-two. Due to the ongoing construction boom and shortage of building materials and workers, the applicant has been delayed in obtaining the permits. If the additional six-month extension of time is granted, building permits must be obtained by March thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
We have somebody representing the applicant.
Hey, uh, good evening, everyone. Jay Klein with the Harmony Law. How's everyone doing this evening? Um, I think Mr. Lyons summed it up, you know, perfectly. Uh, we, we've been hoping to get this project going and it just, you know, the, the timing. Uh, um, I think we all know, you know, it's been one new challenge after another and they seem to be impacting our ability to. You know, really uh, uh, get work going over at four ninety Westport Avenue. Uh, you know, the hardships that you all recognize when you originally approved the projects, uh, uh, you know, remain. Uh, there, there's, there's no change there. Uh, and certainly, uh, we want to get these uh built as quickly as we can. We're just having trouble lining up our team. Uh, having those folks getting uh, uh, the materials that they need uh, uh lined up. Uh, and really doing this, right? So, uh, you know, this extension will, will buy us some more time to uh. Get that all together and, and, and make it happen. Um, and really deliver some nice uh outdoor recreational space. Uh, uh, for, for, for Norwalk and folks who've come to the fitness club on this property.
So my only concern is um, to all of those that I recognize were, were part of this. Uh, initial approval and then the extension. And then the second extension, I thought that our minutes read that it was a final extension.
I think it was.
I, I don't recall that. I'd, I'd honestly have to double, double check. Uh, uh, to be honest, and not, my apologies for not having the opportunity to do that before. Uh, you know, this is a unique. Um, uh, time, right? Uh, uh, and you know, while I'm not building any paddle courts, I can just tell you from experience, I've been trying to get. Some, some work done at my own uh residence in this time period. And I've been, been having a hard time getting that job off the ground. So, um, you know, this is a, a unique time, you know, I, I. Reviewed the zoning regulations, uh, you know, very carefully before coming here. Uh, there's nothing that prohibits the granting of, of an extension, uh, uh, certainly a six-month extension. If, if you think perhaps a shorter period of time is, is, is more appropriate, um, you know, so, so be it, but. Uh, we really think this is appropriate, uh, given the surrounding circumstances and. You know, I think as, as some of you may recall, you know, we. Uh, 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 through the public hearing process and, and through neighbor outreach, we're able to earn our neighbor's support for this, this project. Um, so denying the extension would. Really leave us in a situation where the variance that was approved or the variance that was earned. Or the variance that was supported by, by our neighbors is effectively uh overturned. Uh, and, and. That, that, that's something that we don't want certainly. Uh, uh, and, and I don't know that, that, um, you know, anyone wants that.
Just remind me, aren't we building two courts in the rear?
We are, and you know, this was a, this was a lengthy discussion and there was a fair amount of disagreement between members of the board. Um, and. Finally, obviously it was approved. Um, if you were able to say, uh. You know, point to evidence that getting the materials for paddle courts is, you know, harder than. Getting chips out of the far east, something. That would make more sense to me, but I think where Andy was going is this is not that big of a project. So.
Thank you. I was going there, yes. I mean, we've got folks that locally are building courts and they're about ready to start. And whether it's done uh with volunteers or whether it's done with small construction places. I don't know. You're right, there is a building boom, but nevertheless, um, I think we gave you enough time.
Yeah. You gotta go into winter with your extension. I have to believe that there'll be other delays as a result of weather and conditions.
Well, maybe, maybe not. I mean, we have folks here that played her in the winter. Well, maybe, maybe not. I mean, we have folks here that played her in the winter. The, on paddle tennis, they play paddle tennis during the winter. So they go in. Yeah.
But, uh, I think the construction could be an issue.
But if we were to grant one, I would think six months would be, uh, not smart. Um, with, the, the reason we stopped extending, extending, extending is there are people that ask for continuous extensions. And, um, we don't know their motivation for doing that precisely. In this case, COVID did interfere early on. I think we're past that. I think we know how to deal with it. And I, certainly, I think you can build two paddle tennis courts. So the question is, could you get it done in the next three months?
Well, you know, if, if you all feel more comfortable granting a three-month extension rather than a six-month extension, we'll certainly uh, take that and, and work as, as hard as we can. As, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to, to, um, get a, get a no from any of, any of you certainly. If, if three months is more appropriate, uh, or something that feels more comfortable with all of you. Um, we would take that and, and just double our efforts or triple our efforts in, in that time period. Um, you know, but yes, I can't, no, no one can tell what other challenges the future will bring. All I can tell you is the challenges we've uh, encountered in every property owner, every property is, is unique. This one's, you know, certainly unique as we've, we've seen, um, you know, so if three months is something that you all feel more comfortable with, I, I will not argue with that and I'll, I'll respect, you know, that, that decision.
So Tammy, what happens if we give them three months, uh, and it's not complete?
So they would have, you give them an extension, it's three months to pull the permits. And then I guess we normally do the six months, so we would do three months to pull permit and three months additionally to begin construction.
But if they don't act, then they have to go through the entire approval process all over again.
You know, I think one of the issues that we, uh, obviously, um, Mr. Klein, you weren't part of a previous hearing, but one of the issues, uh, that the board has is that we do not want to be inconsistent or indeed, um, throw ourselves open to challenges of being inconsistent, um, treating, treating, um, residents differently. Um, my concern, and I almost feel like I can hear Lee's, Lee's voice, uh, when that second time extension was granted. Uh, this is absolutely, that's it, right? Got it? Um, so.
And Taylor Strubinger.
Be less than six months and I think it also, if, if it's going to be at all.
You remember Taylor Strubinger who proposed that we stop doing these extensions, add-on infinitum?
Yeah.
Anyway, COVID gave me a reason to allow an extension beyond what I had been comfortable allowing. Um, but that also has to come to a close. There is a, a time to bring the door shut and I, I could live with a three-month extension, but you better believe I wouldn't go past that.
Un- understood.
I don't know how the others feel. I think Mr. Lyon is maybe thinking we don't do an extension at all. How about the rest of you?
Well, I, I was rude enough to try to read your mind, uh, so I don't, uh, I don't object. No, I, I just, uh, I would be, I would support three months.
Okay.
Yeah, I would go, I would go three months. I'd go three months. I think that's reasonable.
And Marilyn's still thinking about it. Danielle?
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, I think it's a fair play. I think times have been very tough, but I do think that's a fair play, to be honest.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think the COVID upset our general planning that a couple of extensions is more than enough. And, uh, it kinda meant that the early extension we gave wasn't particularly useful. And so we're extending a little bit longer.
Alright, this sort of helps pick up some lost time that we were all dealing with. Yeah.
Alrighty.
Terrific. Well, tha- thank you all. I, I appreciate that and my client does too, so.
Was that a, was that a motion and a unanimous, sorry?
Well, that, we'll do that in a second. I was just gonna close the hearing and then move on. And move on to the actions of the board. Alright, uh, here we go. So we're done. Thank you. And, uh, the action, we might as well deal with the last one first, um. Uh, somebody wants to make a motion at a second, then we'll vote.
I make a motion to give a third extension this time for three months and for the minutes to reflect that this is the final extension the board is giving.
Alright, um, I will second it. All in favor? Just raise, raise your hand that I know you're voting. Yay, there we are. Okay, so all in favor, unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your, enjoy everything.
Alright, thanks, Jay. Uh, then we go back to the, to the hard one. So, we've been pretty consistent and here's what I see happening. And I don't want to be prejudiced about this, but I do see requests to make buildings bigger and bigger and bigger all throughout the coastal area. And, uh, that's true here in Norwalk and it's particularly true in Roy. Um, and I think the answer needs to be no. And if somebody comes in and says, well, I'd like to kinda include that with raising the house to meet FEMA. Then the answer would be that we don't wanna do that, but we're gonna have to hold off. That's just my thinking now. Maybe I'll have a different opinion come next month when we, uh, rehear, um, their application.
I, I think we, we go forward, somebody make a motion of what was discussed. I mean, when I walk in Row Eight and I walk by two houses and to my wife's, uh, irritation, I, I point them out every time and say, these are the guys who were trying to get a mass house, uh, because of FEMA and we didn't allow it. Uh, so I'm, you know.
I know where you are, but we gotta wait till next month.
Yeah.
Cause we already agreed to.
But I think that my understanding is they're gonna come back with something for the extension, right? That is going to.
I think they're gonna come back and try to meet what we said, which is don't do an addition while you're trying to raise it to meet FEMA's, uh, guidelines. Cause then that puts you outside of everything. We've approved the date, um, which, and I don't wanna get into that book. I do not wanna get into approving a- additions at the same time we're approving, uh, raising the house. That just, you know, a lot of these houses are older and raising a house is a lot of work. Because the foundations are probably no damn good and there's all kinds of problems they haven't even discovered yet.
Uh, would you stop there? Cause we just had a little party to celebrate the fact that our house is a hundred years old.
Well, mine's not that old yet, but it might end up being that old. I think I'm gonna live forever. With Ozula here. With respect to the minutes, has everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Alright, anybody wanna make a motion? Are there any corrections to start with?
I was.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll go, I'll go with a minute.
Alright, and then anybody second?
I'll second.
And then Danielle seconds. All favor? Raise your hand, show me your hand if you're in favor. Alright. Um, the minutes are passed. Like, Kate, you're abstaining, right?
Yeah, cause I wasn't.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, do we have anything else to cover tonight? I don't have the agenda in front of me at the moment.
Yeah.
That's it. Alright, so rather than close the meeting, anybody that doesn't wanna hang around for the next ten minutes, uh, go ahead and take off. I wanna talk with Tom and Danielle and we're talking about the board and who becomes a permanent member, none of, none of, all that stuff. So, um.
The only thing I'll ask Andy is, uh, do you have time tomorrow for a quick chat with me? If that's something different?
Right, are you gonna, uh, take off and leave the board? Cause if you're gonna do that, I'm gonna commit suicide.
No, 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 it really is a bad, actually, so that's some of the, um, what we've discussed tonight. I, I have some questions, but I'd like to offline. It, it require every, you know, okay.
So I actually have house guests just arrived today, so I will say bid you all good night.
Good night, Keith. Thanks for coming.
Bye-bye.
Danielle and Tom, hang in there.
Okay.
What I'm trying to do, Marilyn, um, I'll talk to you tomorrow. Or in the morning, maybe?
Uh, uh, yes, yes.
Okay, alright. Um, uh, what I'm trying to do is get more women and minorities on the board. And we.
I gotta go.
We haven't had a single minority name put forward, uh, uh, I mean, not considering women a minority. Um, they actually are in the majority. So I'm not doing that, but I am saying I want more women on the board. I don't want an all-white, old white guy for. I just, just doesn't cut it with me. So it's mighty fine that they're on the board, but they can't be like a four or five-member board, uh, full of old white guys. So we have Danielle and we have Tom and you're both more than capable of stepping up. Tom, is it fresh in interest? I don't know if Danielle has in becoming a permanent member of the board. Danielle, your thought?
Sure, I could do it.
And Tom says he could do it. So let me do a little projection. We got five members. We got Lee and Andy and Lion. And my guess is one of those three is probably gonna go away in the next two or three or four months. Um, just, just me kinda projecting, knowing people. With that in mind, we're gonna need two people coming up on the board, one right now. And then one in the very near future. Now, if I'm trying to achieve my objective, I'd rather put Danielle on than Tom to achieve the objective, but not because of your skill levels or your, um, philosophies, but simply because I wanna increase the number of women on the board. Then I wanna have somebody slotted in to go on the board the next time we have an opening. And Tom, I think you're that person, if you're okay with that.
I could, I could change the pronouns on my name.
Well, you could become a Jeopardy contestant.
She's very smart. I'd have her on the board.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. Yeah, the bottom line is I'm retired, I'm volunteering around town. And, uh, I'm available except next month, cause you know I'll be away, but, um, but that's it. Yeah. So whatever, whatever, I serve at your pleasure.
Alright, uh, well, you don't serve at my pleasure, you serve at the mayor's pleasure, but the mayor hasn't talked to me about it lately, so.
I mean, functionally, there's no difference, right?
Yeah, no, over the years, somehow I've been the one that tries to wrestle up people to be on the board. So it just kinda works out that way. In the meantime, um, Danielle, uh, Tammy will contact the city clerk and suggest that we move you from alternate to, um, permanent board member. And she's gonna put the buzz in, uh, the city clerk's head that Tom is in the wings and would make a very good permanent board member. So that she knows that we got two people in mind, one for right now. Then we remind her that we don't have any aldermen. The aldermen just kinda go away. So, you know, we, we need a couple more aldermen, for sure.
So in our travels, would it be a good thing to try and recruit an alternate? I mean, it'd be up to you.
It would, it would. You've been on the board long enough now to know that it's sort of a combination. Uh, we definitely are administrative judges. It's a combination of, um, being fair and also being true to the zoning code. It's, it's hard to do both at the same time, by the way. But, but what somehow we manage.
Okay.
Uh, cause if we were fair only and just said the hell with the zoning code, then we create a real problem for the city. The cities start getting sued over and over and over again.
Yeah.
That has happened.
I just wanna bring up that issue of training. That's still in the, in the wings because there's a backlog of that or?
Yeah, I don't wanna make Tammy feel bad, but we've been beating up Tammy in the background.
So, so we didn't, I actually, I said there was nothing more on the agenda, but I already voted for bear that Steve promised me for September, he would have an action plan.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we'll see. But yeah, we, we do have to get moving on, on, and, and there's gotta be a way. Given the change in, uh, um, Connecticut code, there's gotta be a way of getting some training moving, cause they require it, so.
Demand is there, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that's it. I, I didn't have anything else. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were okay with my thinking and that, that it's alright for me to ask Tammy to proceed and talk to the city clerk.
Sounds good.
Sure.
Talking to the city clerk is kinda like talking to the mayor. Alright, terrific. You guys, thank you for coming and I appreciate everything you're doing. Um, and you've been great. And I'd like you to stay great. Well, Tammy, training.
Yes.
Beat the hell out of anybody.
So, yeah, we've got other commissions saying, hey, hey, what's our training?
Yeah. Um, well, you know, we wanted to be ahead of them. It's just, I don't wanna be stuck in the backseat waiting for everybody else to get it done and then we can't, uh, so.
Right, right. We could probably address all, you know, get all the land use boards together for the training.
In the meantime, if the city clerk could, uh, uh, do us the favor of coming up, I'll take, I would prefer, uh, one more woman, particularly a minority woman from South Norwalk to be specific. But if we can't pull that off somehow, then I can't believe we can't pull it off. Then, uh, I'll take whoever really wants, has an interest and wants to be on the ZBA.
Yeah, okay. And we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yeah, well, um, I think it's, it's.
It's adjourned by default.
We do actually have a courtroom. It only takes three of us to have a courtroom. So, uh, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconds, all in favor, say aye, aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, goodnight. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.